Welcome to the Pinell County Board of Supervisors meeting for June 9, 2021. We'll start out with invocation from Pastor Bill Carney, and then Supervisor Kavanaugh will lead us in the pledge. You all stand.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and all the blessings that you have already showered upon us and will continue to shower upon us. And we pray, dear Lord, that you help us to be ever thankful for all your good gifts to us. Heavenly Father, it is your will that we live together in peace and harmony, defeat the plans of all those who would stir up violence and strife, destroy the weapons of those who delight in war and bloodshed, and according to your will, end all conflicts in our communities and in our world. Support and keep all our first responders. Heavenly Father, we ask you to bless and protect our police, our sheriffs, our firefighters, and all first responders as they serve us, and especially as they put themselves in very dangerous situations. And last but not least, Almighty God, we give thanks that through this wonderful Board of Supervisors, you have blessed them with the gifts they need to serve your people. Lord, cause them to recognize and to act on every opportunity for service, both to your community and for your common good. In your due prayer. Amen.
Amen. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Let me just make sure that I have this thing turned off. Does yeah? Let's cover all my bases. Okay, thank you, everyone. First item is call to the public. Consideration and discussion and comments from the public. Those wishing to address the Pinell County Board of Supervisors may appear in person or submit in writing comments which shall be submitted to the clerk of the board by closed business hours, 5:00 PM, the day prior to the meeting. Comments shall be no more than 250 words. Actions taken as a result of the public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or reschedule the matter for further consideration and discussion at a later date. So I'll start with Natasha, do you have any?
Chairman, the clerk of the board office has not received any comments from the public.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody in the public that would like to address the Board of Supervisors at this time? Okay, seeing none. I'll take us to item number two. County Supervisors Association CSA report. Mr. Sullivan, great to see you. Sure this will be riveting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I fear you set me up to fail right from the beginning there, but thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, I'm Craig Sullivan with the County Supervisors Association. Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to brief you to our new county supervisors. It's a pleasure to see you face to face for the first time, and so congratulations on entering these posts, and we look forward to working with you going forward. The purpose of the briefing is to talk about some of the activities of the County Supervisors Association over the last year, some of the strategic initiatives we've been involved in, and of course, the legislature. You note on the PowerPoint, it's very dense, there's a lot of content in there. It's not my intent to go over everything, I just want to hit some high points and then, of course, answer any questions that I can from each of you as we go forward. I do want to say at the outset that I'm very grateful for your support of the association and your involvement in the association. It makes a stronger collaboration of all 15 counties to have us all coming together and having a strong coalition voice. And I'm very grateful for all of the work that your professional staff does, Mr. Lou, Ms. Ryle, and your contract consultant, Mr. Barnes, who always make sure that we have analysis and information on bills that are in the process that help us support Pinell County. And so I'm just so grateful for the team that you have here, and I want to acknowledge all of them because they're excellent, excellent professionals. So to begin a little bit, let me talk first just about who we are for the folks who might not be familiar with us. The County Supervisors Association is a collaboration of all 15 counties and the 61 supervisors. It's a nonpartisan organization that is focused on creating a forum to talk about issues that are relevant to county constituents and county operations, and of course, developing research and information to support decision-making across counties and work with the state legislature and other external parties. Intergovernmental engagement is really at the core of what we do, and the reason that becomes important is, and you know this better than anybody, is there are external factors outside of county government that impact your operations and resources. So the 15 counties need to be organized to communicate with them, both as a liaison and fielding information from them as well. And so that's really at the core of what we're trying to do. Our leadership are all 61 supervisors in the state, but we recognize that many of you have other things that you need to tend to, but you always have a voice at our table. We do have an executive committee that is elected by our membership, and Mr. Miller, thank you for your service as representing the large county caucus on that. We look forward to your continued leadership in our executive committee and for the work that we get from this county on our legislative policy committee. We want to get your feedback weekly as we go through the legislative session. So it's a very participatory environment for county supervisors and professional staff. I mentioned that we convene forums regularly. This is just a quick list of speakers that we brought through over the past year. We're always looking for opportunities to connect you with decision-makers that can help inform your activities here locally. Shifting gears a little bit, I want to talk about our research function. It's not something that we lead with a lot, but it's foundational to everything we do. And so what our professional staff focuses on is having the capacity to put products together that help inform decisions. We have a very large database of information we've been collecting over time, cost drivers, revenues. It's an input provided by local county professional staff. We do put some of that on our website in the form of our county encyclopedia, as well as our county revenue dashboard. And so at some point, I'd encourage you to navigate those tools. I think you'll be pretty impressed with how they've been developing. Vanessa Fielder on our team has been managing that project, and it incrementally grows year in and year out as we try to build out our local database. That kind of information becomes important as we look for strategic initiatives, and I want to reconnect you with the PSPRS conversation. You all know that the association for several years, along with League of Cities and Towns, was working to reform the pension systems. More recently, we've been focused in building capacity in the counties to better understand how the pension systems are impacting them and what the future trajectory of those costs might be. And so I participate in an advisory committee to PSPRS right now. Our professional staff make sure that we are providing input into the decisions they're making. The League of Cities and Towns serves with me in that capacity, and I think that's helping improve decision-making by getting employer input to the Board of Trustees. Now, we also worked on sharing information about what could be done to get after this problem because it is a significant debt, and this county was one of the first counties to take the important step of pension bonding to lower the long-term costs of the pension system, and it saves the taxpayers here a significant amount of money. About eight counties have followed your lead in that regard over the last several months, some bonding, others adjusting their property tax rates, and others prioritizing reserves that they already have to put in to pay off that debt. So we've come a long way, and I know, Mr. Goodman, Mr. Miller, you know the frustration that local governments have had on this, and so we've all been trying to incrementally help the state and the system solve this problem. So kudos to all of you for your leadership. Another strategic priority we've all been involved in is the pandemic response, obviously. We served a role in just convening supervisors and managers to talk about, share best practices and all that in the response. The federal conversation about resources was a big deal. You all played a big role in that to help secure resources for the counties. Where we stand now is the next phase, figuring out how the new round of monies, the ARPA monies, can be invested in your community. And so we are just helping funnel in comments to Treasury to get greater clarification on the guidance and round tabling with the managers about how people, brainstorming ideas about what people are trying to do with this. So we, as a collaboration of counties, will be engaged in that project for the next couple of years. Shifting off strategic initiatives, I do want to talk about the legislature. It's, as you know, typically done by now, but it's still an ongoing process. So why isn't it finished? Well, it's not uncommon that in years where there's a lot of money, that there's a lot of tension about how to land the budget. This year's probably more significant because there's a large-scale tax package that's on the table that you're aware of in reducing income taxes, changing property tax assessment ratios, and some members have raised concerns about that package. The cities have been very concerned about revenue sharing. So you're very well aware of that. That's what's holding it up in the main, but there are other pet projects that members try to get into the budget related to elections or other things, and that's all kind of in play. You saw this week that the legislature tried in the House to move, it didn't move a budget. They'll try again on Thursday, so we'll see this play out next Thursday. But the hotter it gets, the worse it gets as it relates to the state budget. What I'd like to do is break down a little bit about some of the county touchpoints, and I do have to caution you that this is all changing. We are in a real-time negotiation, and so some of this will change, and so we have to be careful about dialing in on any specific provisions. What you see on the right is where the state's spending a lion's share of money, and I wanted to highlight that because they, like local governments, are focused on debt reduction, pay increases, and when the state gives pay increases, it impacts the whole market for detention officers, sheriff's officers, things like that, and of course, education. What you see on the left is the tax package. The income tax cut significantly impacts the cities, as you know, and possibly impacts state financial stability going forward. We have been providing input on the property tax change. What that change would do is change the underlying mix of your property tax base, slowly shifting more of the overall burden to the homeowner's side. This has been a policy that's been incrementally changing over the last several years by lowering business commercial assessment ratios. That is in this package, going from 18% to 17%. It's fairly small, but it does impact your underlying revenue generating capability, and it does shift future tax burden more to the homeowners. The way the state dealt with the concerns about the homeowners was by increasing what's called the homeowner's rebate. So I won't get into the technical elements, but it's basically a subsidy to homeowners to buy down their school tax rate, and so they did that. That's an imperfect solution because it doesn't touch the secondary taxes, it only touches the primary, and it doesn't hit all classes of property. So this package is in play, and in some form, this will come out in the final budget. A few other county touchpoints that I wanted to highlight for you. The Department of Juvenile Corrections local government fee is not relevant here. You all helped get rid of it for the rural counties. It does impact Maricopa and Pima. Currently in the budget, there's relief from the counties paying the State Department of Revenue. That was a fee that was put in place during the revenue shortfall of 2015. You shouldn't be paying that bill, but it's been in place, and some members have stepped up and proposed to eliminate that. It's currently in the package and would save you about $236,000. The big conversation is around infrastructure, and so there's a lot of money, one-time money that's been allocated to transportation and broadband. I wanted to take a quick moment on ALTEX, Arizona Long-Term Care System. What's that? That is the state's program to support elderly and physically disabled folks who need long-term care. We don't do anything as it relates to the program. What we do do is we help pay the bill, and so when the state makes changes to that, we feel it. This year, your bill's going to be about $12 million. Now, I think that's lower than the prior year, and that's a good thing, but I want to caution you and your manager and your finance director that I think this is artificially suppressed and will likely see this increase in the future because folks aren't going into the long-term care system right now, so caseloads are down, but also the federal government has increased its support, and so our impact is lower than typical. Two other slides on the budget I just wanted to highlight. There are resources to compensate the local jurisdictions for the transwestern pipeline settlement. This is something we worked in partnership with our colleague organization, Arizona Association of Counties, and their client base, and that was a good result that ended up in the budget. Similarly, county reentry planning services, where your county will receive $4 million of that allocation going forward. A lot here, a couple of things I wanted to highlight. Mr. Miller, you have been leading the charge on a lot of water-related matters, and I've been grateful for your leadership in that capacity. You had success this year on a bill that was in the process. Kudos to you on that. That was a lot of hard work. The legislature's finally hearing a lot of the county leaders that we need more resources for water supply development, and so there is about $200 million that they're putting on the table to fund revolving funds for water development, drought mitigation, and that kind of thing. We need to figure out a lot of the details here, and so we'll be working on that as we go forward. And border resources are obviously a big issue right now. There are monies in the budget that will go to the sheriffs related to border security, and you guys will likely be included in that. What I'd like to highlight, though, is that this is changing because there are elements to this package that are changing. So we'll just have to see how it shakes out. This is a list of the road projects, again, highly in flux, and there was some amendment language that might change some of this, and you can see some of the projects that were listed in the original budget related to Pinell, as well as road preservation dollars. But again, caution, 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 this is changing. Quickly on broadband, they put a lot of resources to support county planning grants as it relates to broadband development. That's something we all asked for. I know you've got Ms. Ryle working on broadband-related activities, so just know the state did accelerate its commitment to broadband deployment. I want to talk a little bit about bills. We do take some bills into the process. Of the bills we introduced, two were signed into law, and those two came out of Pinell County. And so the military leave pay issue at the lower left there and the right in candidates were ideas you brought forward, were adopted by your colleagues across the state, and then our team, working with Mr. Barnes, shepherded those through the stakeholder process in the legislature. And I really want to thank Mark and his teammate Rebecca Beebe. They worked constantly in this and worked very hard to get those to the finish line. Largely what we do is what we call reactive advocacy, and so I have a few slides on that. Counties are unique. We have so many touchpoints with state law that every year the legislature is in session, they can change your operations at the stroke of a pen. So there are hundreds of bills that touch you. We engage them and try to amend them favorably. This year, as you know, there was a big conversation about elections. Over 130 election-related bills were in the process. That's massive, never seen anything like that. And that's all kind of sorting itself out. You're probably familiar with the change to the permanent early voting list that was passed into law, and of course, there's an ongoing conversation about additional identification on mail-in ballots. What we look at in election bills is process, so we're really focused on, well, how does all this work and how does it exist with existing statutes in our processes? And since supervisors have some functions and recorders have some functions, we work very closely with the Arizona Association of Counties, who represents the recorders, and I want to extend my appreciation to their good work. The recorders were awesome at providing input into these election bills, and Jen Marsen did a very, very professional job in leading that dialogue with state lawmakers. The pandemic, as you might imagine, was a conversation at the legislature. Here are some bills that were chapered, and for the new folks, chapered means signed into law, and so that's what that means at this point, and then those that are pending are still in the legislature. But they passed laws related to mask mandates, licenses revocation, and things like that. We were part of the coalition to get additional civil liability protections for local governments and businesses as it relates to claims related to COVID. This last slide is just to show you that we do operate in many, many policy areas, and this is just a select area, tax policy, environment, transportation, infrastructure. We do a lot of work in pensions and workers' comp, and there were some bills related to firefighter cancer, which doesn't touch the county, but often we see similar types of policies for PTSD, which do touch county operations, so we may see some of that next year. And there was a measure put in place to allow for local pension board consolidation. When we get done with the legislative session, we provide all the counties with a summary of every bill that touches their operations that passed, and that's something your team can use to, when they get focused on implementation. The last thing I wanted to touch on is just going forward. When the session's over, we will do a session wrap-up to just talk about what happened, and I mentioned the legislative summary documents. We have to transition into implementation mode, and so that's how we'll spend the summer. We are asking that counties that would like the CSA to adopt proposals for next year, provide those ideas to us on August 8. And I know that's a little early, but it just helps us get rolling, and as you know, we're a little flexible with that date anyway. And going forward, we don't have Board of Supervisors meetings in the summer months, but we do meet with the managers. We will be meeting in June, well, this Friday, with all the county managers, and then we do have our board meetings kicking off again September 16. But I'd like all of you to make a note on your calendars for what we call our Legislative Summit. That's when we get all the counties together to adopt our legislative platform for next session, and that this year, that's being done in Prescott, being hosted by Yabapai County. So we're looking forward to getting back face to face for all of that. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I know I went way over time, but thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Looks good. Yeah, it's all in limbo anyway. I mean, a lot of it is, and...
So after the dust settles, we'll see where we're at, but thank you.
Well, thank you all. Have a great...
Well done.
Thanks, Greg.
Okay, brings us to item number three, the county managers' report, information only. Mr. Lou.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, and thank you to everybody, all the team members that are working on the fires. I'm going to delegate my time over to Chuck Komet, our emergency operations manager, to give us an update on the fires.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the board. Chuck Komet, emergency manager for Pinell County. So a couple of updates. First one is from the Margot Fire. Just briefly, wanted to let you know that from that fire in Dudleyville that started April 8th, we have crews out there that started, let's say Wednesday, started Monday to do the debris removal of the 30 structures that were lost or damaged there. We have a total of 38 people out there, some county staff, mostly volunteers, and they're working on, like I said, 24 sites, 30 structures, and they've cleaned two properties as of this morning. We also had the state out there yesterday to take a look at things as part of the disaster declaration that we did with that to see about rolling in debris removal as part of that disaster reimbursement potential. As far as the Telegraph fire goes, I do have a deputy IC, Jeff Andrews, here with me today. If you would like any technical questions answered or anything like that, I just want to give you a brief overview from our perspective, you know, kind of the global thing for this. It started on Friday, southeast of Superior in Tonto National Forest. By Saturday morning, we were getting phone calls from the sheriff's office saying that in coordination with the fire teams that were there at the time, that we were going to need to put Superior into SET, and what that is, is part of the Ready, Set, Go program initiative a couple of years ago that was established between emergency management and the sheriff's associations to let people know kind of an easy way of be ready to the potential for evacuate. SET would be, you know, there's a good chance you're going to have to evacuate and go is meaning you need to go. So that was Saturday morning when we put Superior in SET. It was a little bit later that we put the Top of the World into SET as well. Late Saturday night is when Highway 60 was closed in order to effect an evacuation if need be for Top of the World, but then also because of the fire dangers that we're getting closer and closer to Highway 60 and the amount of fire traffic, firefighter traffic that was going to be going back and forth to handle that fire at that section. It was on Sunday when we put Top of the World into GO, and we had most of the residents that left there, there are a few that decided to stay behind, understanding, you know, what that meant for them. And then it was, the next day was when APS had to shut their power off to that area, so 211 customers in Top of the World were without power or are without power because of the damage to poles, as well as the firefighter, you know, risk and safety that goes along with that with downed power lines. So fast forward a couple more days, we are still all in that same, you know, set for Superior. Highway 60's still closed, 177's still closed, and we still have Top of the World in GO status. We're hoping that things will change over the next couple of days. They've made a lot of great progress to that area of the fire, and as you know, it's progressed east and pushed into Hila County. I will say this because the news talked about it this morning, and my phone blew up, so hopefully this will alleviate some of that. The five structures that were reported in the news this morning to have been lost are all in Hila County. They are not in Pinell County. So the, where we stand now is 21% contained, about 81,000 acres that have been burned, and we've got, or they've got roughly 800 personnel on that fire, fighting that, you know, from Superior all the way to Globe and beyond. So that's it for the, kind of the highlights. If you have any questions with me or if you'd like to hear some more from Mr. Andrews, be happy to do that, but I don't want to take up too much of your time.
Got a question or you want to?
I want to make some statements and some advice. So, of course, we are all out there to the public, and we get, all this week, we've been contacted, what can we do? And there's some things that the county can do, but a lot of what can be done is you can do it yourself. We all have unincorporated residents in our districts, and you look at their addresses, their foothills this or canyon that. We got folks that live up against the mountains on the edges of cities, and as of right all this week, the fire department has been out in my area doing fuel reductions. And if you look at a palaverdy tree or an ironwood tree, they grow over like this, and then under that tree, you've got brittle bush and hohobas and sagebrush that grows under there. And when the fire hits that tree, it just goes up, and then it jumps and jumps and jumps. So what they're doing is they're taking away all of that easy fuel so that if a fire does get away, then it's so much more easy to contain. And everybody that lives in a remote area like this on the edge needs to be doing this to their own property. And if you go to my Facebook page, I've got a series of videos that I did showing it and showing the crews out there working, and ignore some of the political stuff on there. I'm sorry, we're all political. But if you go to that, those posts, you'll see some examples of how it should look when they're finished and before and after, and it really helps the fire department to contain fires where they are. So I just wanted to get that out there. Also, the county and code enforcement does not drive around looking for people to cite. We, I believe, we have to respond to complaints, right? So if you know of a property that looks like a terrible fire hazard, then do give the county a call, and we can go drop a letter to them, say, hey, you need to cut your brush. But I don't think we go around just citing people for a terrible brush. So everybody said, if you see something, say something.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Mr. Kavanaugh.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Komet, thank you for coming today, and I've received high praise directed at your staff from the Rubicon team. So they said, the Rubicon team said Pinell County is the most organized, well-prepared outfit that they have worked with in recent memory. So kudos to you, and my thanks to the, we have about 750 firemen, firefighters on the Telegraph fire, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And do you know how many on the Mescal fire?
About 650.
Okay, so... So 13, 1400 firefighters. And that's, obviously, we're very dry, and we're going to be talking about approving fireworks displays coming up soon. And so I'd like to, you know, I'd like either of you to speak on that for a moment. Is there, is there a risk we should?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. It's not appropriate at this point in time for the County Managers' Deleguée to respond to questions. However, you do have a consent item, AW, where you are approving an emergency declaration for the Telegraph Fire, and it would probably be appropriate under that item when we get there.
When we get there, yes.
Very well.
I agree.
And excuse me, and also for the firework display.
Correct, I was going to say. And we have, so, let's do it in sequence as presented on the agenda.
Sure thing, we'll call you back.
Got you.
So, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Under the County Managers' Report. Mr. Lou, you good? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, brings us to the Purchasing Division Report. Ms. McBride?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Members of the Board. Shawna McBride, your Purchasing Manager for Pinell County. And today I have your June 9, 2021 Purchasing Division Report. So first up today, the Board is requested to approve the following new contract awards. We recommend contracts be awarded to the following suppliers for specialty legal services. Copper Smith Brockelman, Dickinson Wright, Helm, Livesay, and Worthington, Hinshaw and Culbertson, Jackson Luce, Jones, Skelton, and Hichuli, Leonard and Felker, Mois Sellers and Hendricks, Pierce Coleman, Sims Mackin, Struck Love Bojanski, and Asito. The initial two-year term of the contract begins on July 1, 2021, and has three automatic optional one-year extensions. And this contract is used by the County Attorney's Office. We also recommend Pinell County Community College District be awarded a contract to provide Title 1B, We Owe Youth Program Provider Services, beginning July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022, with four optional one-year extensions. This contract will be under the oversight of the Pinell County Workforce Development Board. And last, we recommend DCS Contracting, Inc. be awarded the contract as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder for Meridian Road, Germain Road, to State Route 24, roadway and drainage improvements at a cost of $8,938,000 plus a contingency of $850,000. This contract will be used by the Public Works Department. Next, the Board is requested, is requested to approve the following contract amendments. We recommend approval of Amendment 2 to exercise the optional extension period with file-on-Q for our Property and Evidence Management System. This contract is used by the Pinell County Sheriff's Department. We also recommend improvement, approval of Amendment 2 to exercise the optional extension period with Tishler Bice for our Infrastructure Improvement Plan and Development Impact Fee Study. This contract is used by the Planning and Development Department. And next, we recommend approval of Amendment 3 to exercise the optional extension period for civil construction services with the following suppliers. DBA Construction, Inc., Sunland Asphalt and Construction, SWP Contracting and Paving, and Via Sun Corporation. This contract is used by the Public Works Department. Last in our amendments, we recommend approval of Amendment 3 to exercise the optional extension period with the following suppliers for asphalt maintenance and repair services. Cactus Asphalt, Southwest Slurry Seal, and Via Sun Corporation. And this contract is also used by the Public Works Department. Next, we are requesting the Board approve the following change orders. Purchase Order Number 242362, the change amount is $59,841 for a total amount of $13,511,624 for Danston Construction for Construction Services requested by the Facilities Department. We also have some cooperative purchases over $250,000 the Board is requested to approve. Requisition 161478 in the amount of $340,423 to CDW Government. This is for the Google Apps Google Suite subscription and is requested by IT. And last, we would like to make the Board aware of the following cooperative purchases that were made that had a value between $100,000 and $250,000. Purchase Order 245067 in the amount of $249,504.53 to High Tech Network and Security Solutions for Cisco Security and requested by the IT Department. And then Purchase Order 245122 in the amount of $154,947, sorry, $947.50 to ESRI for license renewal requested by the IT Department. And that's your purchasing report for June 9, 2021.
Ms. McBride, back on items three and four, I believe. Can you roll it back to there? Those are like on-call types of contracts.
Yes, those are.
We just have them in place because the department may need something from them that they're specialized in.
That is correct.
I just like to make that clear. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions or comments at this time? Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchasing report dated today as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. I just have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shawna. Have a great day.
You, too.
Okay, brings us to item number five, the consent items. All items indicated by an asterisk will be held by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless the board member, county manager, or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. So, Mr. Kavanaugh, you indicated you wanted some, something polled?
Mr. Chairman. C and D, sir.
C and D. Okay. Anybody else from the board?
I don't want to poll any, I just wanted to make some comments. I was going to comment on some of the C through G, but I'll wait for Kevin on that. Also on AH about the illuminated stop signs that we're going to be doing with the tribe. We have some of those in my, in my area.
Yeah.
And I just want everybody to look at them, they're really, for a remote area, they're really great, and I think it's a trend in the future. So, everybody pay attention when you see those.
I'm going to poll it, and then you can make better, closer to comment about it at this time. So, we'll poll AH as well.
And then AW.
And then AW.
So we've got C and D.
So we have C and D, AU, or I mean, AH, and AW.
AH and AW. Okay.
I have a motion?
Actually, do you have the public, did you ask them?
Oh, I'm sorry. I need to ask the county manager, do you want anything polled? Does the public want anything polled? Mr. Ravelis? Come identify yourself and tell us what, which one? I'm sorry.
Roberto Ravelis, resident of Gold Canyon. Mr. Chairman, I just have one question on consent item AF.
AF, okay, we'll poll it as well.
Can't make sure I get them. Where is AF?
Anybody else? If not, you good? I think so.
Should we give it a shot?
They're strategizing on something else. Do you want to go for a, a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve items A through AW minus item C, D. AH, AF.
AG.
AG, and AW. Is that correct?
Did we get that right?
Just for clarity, can you tell me who polled AG?
Let me look at it. That's the one that Mr. Sertie was talking about?
AH.
Oh, AH, not AG. Not AG.
Okay. Oh, then let's, minus AG. Can I do that?
If we can just redo the motion.
Let's just start at the beginning.
You would do that to me, wouldn't you? Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve items A through AW minus C, D. Don't interrupt. AF, AH.
And AW.
And AW.
Good to go.
We're good.
Can I get a second on that before anything changes?
Mr. Chairman, I have a second.
Moved in seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. I just have it, okay. C and D. Who wants to, who has this down? Natasha, but who wants to speak to it staff-wise? Do you have somebody specific, Kevin, that you want to ask any questions to?
Well, the Emergency Operations Director and the, and the Fire Director.
Okay. Mr.?
May have some expertise.
Komet? Okay.
Good morning again, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Members of the Board. Chuck Komet, Emergency Manager for Pinell County.
Thank you. Supervisor Kavanaugh has some questions about C and D, I believe.
Thank you. Mr. Komet, we have two applications for fireworks displays. The fireworks productions, let me change glasses, are going to be handled by a professional fireworks company. And it's my understanding that there typically is fire staff on hand to fight a fire if one starts. And I did a little research, and I found in the past that we've had fires start up in San Manuel over the years and maybe perhaps other places. So my concern with these is the risk of fire. We have 1,500 fire personnel roughly from the region already fighting wildfires that are out of control. So, can you address with your expertise and your knowledge whether you think it's a wise idea to approve items C and D?
Yes, sir. Certainly will. I'll at least do my best. So for, for C and for D, and just some quick background on the actual permitting process, the cities and towns obviously will have their own permitting process as such, but anything within the county would go through the Clerk of the Board's office. And it is a process in which they fill out an application. The fire district, if there is one, is said to be notified, but there is not an approval or disapproval on that piece. And then the final approval comes from the Sheriff's Office. And we will see it as well in our office, provide any, any thoughts that we may have for, for things, but we don't have like a true approval in that, in that process, but there, you know, can be discussion, obviously. And in knowing the fireworks productions of Arizona, the top-notch group that have been doing it for a long time throughout the state, and they always have good shooters and are always putting on safe productions. And in this case, with it being in, excuse me, with it being in the Saddle Brook area, obviously, they would talk to, to Golden Ranch Fire, which does typically have personnel staged there. The other one for Toltec Elementary, that would be within Eloy Fire District's purview, and I've not spoken with them, but I know in the past they have been there as well. And I can say that the, for state land, everything in Pinell County is a stage-two restrictions, which means in state lands, no fireworks, no operating of particular machinery, no, you know, shooting, target shooting or anything like that because of how dry everything is. That obviously is not the case. Neither of these properties are on state land, so that piece doesn't necessarily apply. The discussion with fire districts and fire departments as of late because of everything going on and how dry it is, yeah, their preferences that we're not, you know, just straight up trying to start fires. You know, it, it happens, I mean, it happens all the time. And I know A-Mountain, for example, down in Tucson, will catch fire almost every single July 4th celebration because of the fireworks that go on, and Tucson Fire is, you know, is ready for that. Goodness, if you were asking straight up for my professional opinion, and I think that's what you were asking me.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Man, I wasn't ready for that one. In knowing both places, the surrounding area, the immediate surrounding area is fine for, for the fireworks displays. You know, they have 100 or 200 feet wide area. Beyond that is the bigger concern. And beyond where, where those things come down is, is the bigger concern. And I can say that Eloy Fire does not, I mean, they have, they're incredible people, but they don't have a tremendous amount of resources, and resources that would be backing them up are coming from 20, 30 minutes away, which there'll be a lot of fire activity that would grow from that. The Saddle Brook one is going to be pretty similar in that, you know, there are, you know, the crews there, Golden Ranch is an amazing group, but they would also have backup coming from, you know, 20 minutes away, which would lend for the potential for fire growth. So, my preference is not to have more fires.
Right.
In, in the county.
And, and forgive me, but the, the backup you're talking about, those, that's, those staff members might already be up on the Telegraph and Mescal Fires, is that correct?
So they'll still have staffing for normal day-to-day operations, but to that end, they may be on a different call. So, you know, if you've got a, a fire station that's, you know, five miles away, 10 miles away or something like that, but they're on a medical call someplace else, well, then you're getting crews from the other fire station that may be another 12 miles away or something like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Non-answer, answer?
Well, I think I got your answer, and generally, you think it's not a good idea.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you for your courage.
Thank you.
Okay, are you good with that?
I'm good with that.
Answer for both of those. C and D.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we deny the fireworks applications for items C and D.
I have a motion to deny. Do I have a second? That guy's lack of a second. Board's pleasure.
I move we approve C and D.
I have a motion to approve C and D. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve C and D. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
A 4-1 vote. Thank you, everyone. Moves this to, I believe it's AH, or AF, I'm sorry. So, who polled AF?
This is Mr. Ravelis's.
Oh, Mr. Ravelis. Oh, there we go. Thank you. Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, one question. I've seen conflicting data on the percentage of Pinell County residents who have been vaccinated. And since this deals with vaccination, I'm asking, what is the most accurate report on vaccinations for Pinell County residents of all ages?
Okay. Do, Mr. Lou, do we have somebody that can answer that question for Mr. Ravelis?
Yeah, Corey Redden, our Public Health Emergency Preparedness Manager is here, and she can help guide us in the right direction to find that information.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, Members of the Board. Corey Redden, Bio Defense Preparedness and Response Division Manager for Pinell County Public Health Services District. The question, as far as accuracy of vaccination results, we do update our website on the vaccine page daily, and that is a reflection of data that we are receiving from the, the State Health Department. And we have over 49 providers in our county, and in addition to our And in addition to our clinics that are offering the vaccine, there is a little bit of a delay in somewhat data dumping all of the immunizations that occur the day before into the state immunization system. And then that will reflect the next day, all of those doses that have been administered. There are providers, it's an executive order, that that must be done within a 24-hour period. But there are times that there may be a delay in the entrance of the administrated doses in that state system.
Okay.
So there could be a little bit where you may see the state report and then the time that we're entering, there may be a slight difference on our website, but it typically happens with, it resets within 24 hours where the data should match.
Mr. Ravelis, does that answer your question? Or do you have more specific locations of where you're finding this data? If you don't mind.
What is the number or rate of vaccinations that have been provided?
To the, to Pinell County?
To residents of Pinell County.
Residents of Pinell County.
In-arm vaccinations.
Okay. Do you have a, do you have a number on that, Corey?
We are, I don't, I'd have to look that up on our website. We do have dashboards on our website now that have that information, but we were over 250,000 in our county that are vaccinated.
Okay.
Vaccines administered, not fully vaccinated. That is just the amount of doses delivered into arms.
Doses delivered. So some of those doses may still require a second dose.
Mm-hmm. That number on the very top, that over 250,000.
It's just how many people have received a shot.
Yes.
Whether it's one or two, we don't have that really broken down.
Right. And that would be in our county, but there are times that residents in Pinell County will be vaccinated in another county. And that information does take, you know, 24 hours to meet into our system.
Right. And I want to just interject in the fact that I believe Natasha was trying to tell me at one time, because it's almost, the reset is done because sometimes there's overlap or sometimes, like all of a sudden, oh, yeah, we had a bunch of residents that got vaccinated in another county. It takes a little bit of time for that to get over here. Same thing, we have somebody from Maricopa County gets vaccinated here, we've got to send that data to Maricopa.
You're absolutely right.
So it's kind of fluid, might be a good word for it.
It totally is.
Okay. Mr. Ravelis, is that, are you satisfied with that answer? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Corey.
Thank you.
Okay. So do I have a motion on item AF?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item AF on the consent items.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you. AH. I see Jason in the back, if you don't mind. And I'm glad you did pull it off because I do have some comments about it, but if you want to go ahead and start Supervisor 30?
Let's.
Members of the board, Chairman, Vice Chairman.
Yes.
My name is Jason Botch. I'm the Transportation Planning Supervisor for Pinell County Public Works.
Okay.
So I don't know if you wanted history on this or...
Yeah, because that might answer my question. I have a, I have an idea where I think where maybe some of this started, and I want to, if you give me a little history on it.
Absolutely. I believe back in November of 2019, the Pinell County Strategic Transportation Safety Plan was brought before you.
Okay.
As you know, we're involved with CAG, MAGS, and Corridor. They all had safety plans, I think in 2015, 2016, 2017. So we kind of took Pinell County as a whole out of those three plans, got one centralized plan for Pinell County. We got 13 projects out of that. This is one of those. This is an LED stop sign project. It was originally a Pinell County project that had Casa Grande, Coolidge, Eloy, and the Gila River Indian Community. We, the project was initiated last year. We got IGA signed for Pinell County, for Casa Grande, for Coolidge, and for Eloy. ADOT has been working on an IGA with Gila River Community since last June. I would say in March, we were contacted and asked to remove the Gila River Indian Community from the project, so they would not get their three signs. Thinking about it, it didn't make sense. It's a HSIP, 100% covered, no local match. And the issue was, there's a, in the IGA, they want the tribe to waive their sovereign immunity or their sovereignty. And that's between ADOT and the GRIC. Clearly, the GRIC did not want to sign that. And so what we thought about was, well, it's 100% covered, why don't they give us the signs? So what this is doing is amending the original IGA where we'll get our three signs, we'll get the GRIC's three signs, and essentially we'll turn the three signs that go to the GRIC over to them. We have an IGA that we're writing up with the GRIC. They will install them and get their three signs, and certainly improve safety in their area. So it's just a way that we could make sure that the GRIC got their signs as well.
Okay. That sounds good. And my point was, that was, I mean, I remember on the side corridor, working on these safety projects that we studied, and we knew if they were good projects, that we could probably get the grant money to do them. And so I really am happy that that's taken place. Supervisor 30?
So, yeah, I was going a different direction. I just wanted to point out how useful these are because in, Apache Junction has some rural areas, and we had two streets that are traditionally, you don't stop on them, and that's Tomahawk and Superstition. And in this one particular intersection, Tomahawk stopped, and there were fatalities there. And it was so remote, you couldn't put a red light out there, so what could they do? So they came up with these solar-powered, which is how they run all night, stop signs, and they definitely give you a warning way ahead of time. And so for remote areas where people are daydreaming and they don't expect to stop, it definitely will save lives and accidents. So I think this is a coming trend, and in a remote county like Pinell, I think you're going to see more and more of these. So look for those. If you want to see an example of them, Superstition and Tomahawk has one.
Two, very effective, yeah. And the reason that I think ADOT wants those, wanted sovereignty to be signed over is just basically for maintenance, if it's typically what it is.
I believe so. Yeah, I believe that's what it is.
And, I mean, we've dealt with that in the past, and so, but anyway, well, I'm glad that we're able to help our neighbor and make safer intersections, because these rural intersections are quite dangerous at times. So, thank you. Is everybody okay? Any other questions, comments? Seeing none? Thank you, Jason.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion for AH?
I would move that we approve AH.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you. AW? Is that where I'm at?
Having a root beer.
Mr. Chairman, I'm the one that asked, pulled this. And so I guess I have a question in regards to the declaration itself, but then even the aftermath in the declaration, is there a way that we could, I mean, I'm thinking of some of the fires that have happened in other counties and where we didn't do the proper preventative measures after the fires. When the monsoons hit, we had some floods, and I'm thinking of Coconino County, where there was some life, loss of lives, it was lost as a result of that because we didn't do the proper preventative things after the fact. And so I don't know if there's any way that we can add that into this to, as a request. I don't know.
Hope this isn't stump the attorney.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor is Kevin Costello, Deputy County Attorney. Supervisor, coming to your question, we would have to look at what was trying to be accomplished. Certainly, the purpose of this resolution is simply to declare an emergency that frees up funds, that allows additional authorities to do additional things that would not only, you know, help the firefighting, but then the recovery efforts as well. I know Mr. Kamet may be able to address that a bit, but the emergency also, you know, response includes recovery as well as just the initial response. So if there are specific actions that you would like to see included in the resolution, you know, we could look at that. However, I don't think that will be necessary to allow the authority to do those types of things. I think, you know, those are often included in emergency response. Certainly, one of the main purposes of just the declaration of emergency is to free up state and federal monies. In that regard, it's important to get this as, done as quickly as possible, to, you know, open that spigot as you, if you will, free up those potential monies that can help respond. Certainly, we can come back with additional actions if there are specific things that the board feels need to be done. But hopefully, that answers your question.
That does. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Be good with that?
Yeah, I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Okay. So Board's pleasure on AW?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve AW as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to recess the Board of Supervisors meeting and open up the Public Health Service District Board of Directors meeting. Have that right here. So item number one is consent items. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled in a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. So anybody on the board? Anybody in the county manager's office? Anybody in the public for the Public Health Director, Public Health Services District? Seeing none? Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve all consent items A through E.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. Adjourn the Public Health Direct District meeting and reopen the Board of Supervisors meeting. So I believe we're at item number seven, which is Mr. McCord. Special approval or disapproval of an intergovernment agreement with Maricopa County for the use of the treasurer's remittance and online collection service system.
Good morning, Chairman, Board of Supervisors. Yeah, we just call it T-Rocks.
There we go. T-Rocks.
So make it easy.
Okay.
Yeah, so we were approached, actually before the election, by the Maricopa County Treasurer's Office. They wanted to use our software. We kind of delayed that in the fact that there was going to be a new treasurer coming in, and I wanted to make sure that they were going to continue on with using it and then not get halfway through this IGA process, and then a new treasurer takes over and he decides he didn't want it. So subsequently, John Allen, is the new Maricopa Treasurer, had looked at the system. They needed to update theirs, and they liked what Pinell County has developed and has to offer. There is some ongoing stuff beyond this that they would like to continue to keep discussions going, but this gets them the software initially so that they can start onboarding it and making the necessary changes and stuff that need to happen so that they can scale up for their operations. Chairman Miller and I, as well as County Manager Leo, Lou, met with them so that we have an understanding of what they want. But at this point, this is just to provide them the opportunity to get the system up and running.
Right.
The legacy system.
I'm happy to be helping our neighbors.
Yeah, yeah. The legacy system they have is pretty outdated, so they, they need, they need help. And I'm glad that Pinell County is able to step in and help them.
Right. All right. Cool. Any other questions for Treasurer McCord?
I have one. I see it's $150,000 one-time payment. Is there any, like, ongoing or updates?
So their initial request was that they, that they would purchase the software outright. This is the initial step. This is what we've given to other counties as well that are using the system, because it's an IGA that renews. But they, there's additional conversations that they want to have about being able to actually just outright purchase the software, where they would own a piece of it. But that's for another discussion down the road. This just gets them the ability to be able to use it now.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I believe we also assist with some IT service if they need it, don't we?
We.
Then that, in that $150,000, doesn't it include some?
Chairman Miller, no, we actually took that out of the IGA.
Oh, did you? Okay.
Yes, yes. So this is just, just for the software. They have, they have a much bigger IT staff just for the Treasurer's Office than what we have, so. And the fact that they, they have one of our, well, they have the, one of the former developers of the T-Rock system that used to work here, now works there. So he's, you know, obviously, it's been a couple of years, but I'm sure it won't take him long to be able to figure out, you know, what, what changes we made and what needs to happen with the system, so.
I'm happy to hear that we're on the cutting edge of...
Well, T-Rocks has been around for quite a while, but I think Pinell County was very, had some foresight when they created it because a lot of the other counties are, you know, we have other counties that are using this. And the other major player in the arena, in this arena, you know, it's a, it's a cookie cutter thing. You buy what you get, and it doesn't necessarily fit the statutes of Arizona, and it doesn't fit the way Pinell County does business. We created a software that fits Arizona and works very well for Pinell County. So kudos to the staff here for realizing this many years ago.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions or comments at this time? Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number seven as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Eyes have it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. McCord? So here we are on number eight, presentation and discussion approval, disapproval of Pinell County tentative budget for fiscal year 21, '22. Angie?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Angie Woods, Director of Office Management and Budget. This morning, this item is before you to, the purpose is to adopt a tentative budget in accordance with state statute and the guidelines from our Auditor General's office. We have prepared the schedule according to those requirements and have been, that has been attached to the agenda item. So this item is really to approve that. Natasha, could you put the agenda item language up for me, please? Thank you so much. It's come to my attention that the agenda item language needs to be amended. The agenda item language, when it comes to approving positions created, we would like to amend the agenda item language to state approval of this budget also approves the creation of any newly requested positions which have and are, are consistent with, so those four words, and are consistent with existing job classifications that have, that were included in the budget development process. We'd like to amend that, that particular wording, please.
Say that again.
This, the sentence that starts with approval of this budget also approves the creation of any newly requested positions which have and are consistent with existing job classifications that were included in the budget development process.
Everybody good with that? Understand where the amendment needs to be in this motion?
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
With that, I do have a presentation that I'd like to go through. Thank you, Natasha. I first wanted just to really start with where we started in the budget development process. If you'll remember back to the beginning of March, I believe it was the March 10th meeting, I came before you asking for guidance and priorities for this year's budget. Our priorities were to stick with our county strategic priorities, which include maintaining unrestricted general fund, financial stability reserve. We've switched that from a 15% reserve to a 20% reserve. One of the other strategic priorities is to continue to focus on the, reducing the primary property tax rate. primary property tax rate. Where one of the guidance and priorities is a structurally but balanced budget, so which means that one time, I mean, our revenues do not exceed our expenditures and that department requests do not exceed ongoing revenues. Part of the initiative was also to use one-time revenues to fund one-time expenditures. We also wanted to focus on employee compensation. There, there was a change in our medical benefits trust. We're transitioning over to a single entity self-funded trust. We are focused on increasing budgetary for any workers' compensation and retirement changes, and then access contribution changes. And I wanted to note that earlier in Mr. Sullivan's presentation, he talked about the, the Altex contribution, and in the state's budget, which has not been approved yet, that Altex contribution is decreasing, and it's decreasing, you know, the, the current proposal is about, for us, about one point three million dollars. So, that's something that I will continue to watch as the state develops our budget, and we will adjust accordingly. So, when we've put together all of, sorry, all of our total budget, this is how, if you were to look at Schedule A, falls into several different categories. Our general fund dollars, our special revenue funds, capital, debt service, and enterprise funds. This, this particular year, fifty-three percent of our total budget is going to special revenue funds. Those are the major ones. There are transportation, which includes HERF, our housing, the American Rescue Plan Act monies, our flood control district, our public health district, and then other grants that are in that, that category. As you're well aware, the general fund is all of our elected offices, our appointed departments, and the operating activities that go in there. Our capital projects fund this year, there are some remaining funds yet to be spent on the four buildings that are currently in construction that we're rolling over to next year. And then, in our last meeting, I gave you a list of C I P projects that we plan to move forward into this coming fiscal year. Our debt service fund for this year also increased slightly to include the debt service for that P S P R S and corp bond issuance that happened this current fiscal year. Wanted to give you some highlights. As we put together, the budget direction was given to us to continue our commitment to financial strength, and in doing so, the direction was to give a six cent primary property tax rate reduction, which we were at three dollars and seventy-five cents. This budget that is to be approved today has a primary property tax rate of three dollars and sixty-nine cents. And that is mostly due to our property valuation. So, new construction valuation for this fiscal year grew at one hundred and twenty-five million, which is about a four point six four percent growth. The increase in existing property valuation grew about fifty-five million dollars, which is two percent. So, overall, really a little over six and a half percent, so six point six seven percent, which is fairly good for the county. Local excise tax in this budget and state shared revenue, I've, I've included at a slight increase due to uncharacteristically high collections and abnormal circumstances during this fiscal year. And that's because we are recognizing that some of the revenues that we're currently receiving are probably one-time revenues due to more online shopping, more people shopping at home due to the pandemic. We also included all of the reallocations and budgetary increases that we discussed in the prior meeting, and I've given you quite a bit of detailed information on those things. The budget also includes strategic compensation increases. Our H R department will be bringing a compensation plan for approval. I believe there, that is planned for the final adoption. In between this tentative budget and the final adopted budget, we will be looking at classifications with critical compensation issues, and so there may be some changes to the compensation increases coming forward. Any question there? Last of all, decrease in overall medical benefit costs per employee. So, both the county and the employees' medical benefit costs are going down for, due to that transition to the self, self-funded trust. Questions on the highlights?
Angie, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I do have one little quick question if you'll go back.
Sure.
On the new construction valuation and the existing property valuation, do you know what that, what that number is? What is the assessed value? Do you know that?
I don't have it off the top of my head, but I can give that.
If you'll get it to me, I'll appreciate it.
I can get that to you, sir.
Thank you.
I'd like that as well, please.
Sure, I can.
Just give it to all of us.
I can send it to all. Sorry, just make a note there. All right, moving on to the next slide. I wanted to provide you a chart that shows all of the total revenues that are included in this budget. So, this pie chart excludes any transfers of funds and any fund balance. So, you can see that, that number is quite a bit smaller than our total budget, and that's because we do have funds that are held in reserve for, you know, our financial stability reserve is in there. We have funds that are for projects, transportation projects in the future, those types of things. Wanted to, to point out the state and federal grant funds. That's at twenty percent for this year. A majority of that is for the American Rescue Plan Act money that is coming into us, and then housing and C B D G, so all of the things that are supportive for the COVID-19 pandemic. Property taxes, that twenty-five percent, that's mainly our primary property tax. That also includes our fund control district and our public, I'm sorry, our public library district. The state shared excise tax, it's based upon our census data. At this time, since the census isn't completed, this is still an estimate of where we'll be at for this next year. The county excise tax piece of the pie includes not only our local county excise tax, but it also includes our transportation excise tax and our public health excise tax. So, that percentage to our taxpayers is about a one point one percent sales tax. You'll notice there I have broken out how much money is coming in for vehicle license tax, for our HERF funds, charges for services. Most of the charges for services are for our development type revenues, license and permits, and fines and forfeits. And then, anything that's other governmental is really those in lieu of taxes. So, we have a, a couple of entities that are, are paying in lieu of tax, and then, in addition to that, we get some federal P L T money that is included in that other governmental piece of that pie. Any questions on our revenues for next year? So, distribution of all of our funds, so this is the entire county budget, and there again, we are going to be holding some money in reserve for future projects and financial stability. You'll notice that our general government is about twenty-eight percent. Again, there is all of our board district offices, our treasurer, our recorder, our assessor, the county manager, and all the county manager-appointed departments is in that twenty-eight percent. Twenty-eight percent is public works and their road projects, so quite a bit of stuff going on for our transportation in the county. The criminal justice and law enforcement for the entire county, that includes the county attorney's office, the clerk of the court's office, the sheriff's office, superior court, juvenile court services, adult probation, conciliation court, constables, all of our J Ps, public defense services, and correctional health. So, and this includes not only their general funds, but their non-general fund dollars as well. In the other category, that would be our library district, our school superintendent, superintendent's office, and any of our special districts that we have here in the county. Welfare includes the behavioral health and housing aspect, and in that piece of the pie that has marked for health is our public health, our animal care and control, air quality, our medical examiner's office, and our medical forensic office. Kind of a diverse split there. In our last discussion, we had some talk about the number of employees that will be funded in this current budget. I just wanted to, to provide some historical information for you all to show you how stable our employee workforce has been. So, in comparison to two thousand and eleven, we are pretty much at the same number of employees at, as two thousand and eleven. Along the way, you know, from two thousand and ten to now, we've had some changes due to things like the loss of our long-term care contract and our Horizon Health Care contract. We also reduced some of our full-time employees when we went away from our ICE contract. So, even doing those types of things, our workforce and the number of people that we're employing is pretty stable. Any questions there? This next slide is, is our typical primary property tax dollar, and this will be updated in the meeting to adopt our tax levying rates that will be held in August. So, this representation of the dollar is for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, and at that time, twenty-four cents of the dollar comes to the county. And then, you can see there where our cities and towns, the school district, the college, and other special districts, how that, that tax dollar breaks up. I wanted to point out that this is due to our strategic priority of lowering the primary property tax rate. It is down thirty-one cents. We reduced it thirty-one cents from two thousand and ten, eleven. So, fantastic job by our board members. And to, to further illustrate that point, I have on here, in two thousand and ten, eleven, they were, the, the Pinell County Board at that time was taxing at the very maximum. So, the, the bar on there is the max, and the line is the rate in which we are currently taxing. So, as you can see, after ten, eleven, the strategic priorities reduce that tax rate in comparison to the max rate. Today, for our fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget, we have a max allowable tax levy of a hundred and sixty-eight million, eight hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars. That is about sixty-three million more than what our current tax levy will be for this year. So, sixty, about sixty-three percent more. Our efforts for our strategic priority are clearly stated there. And this pie chart is very similar to one I've showed you in the last few meetings. Nothing much has changed. Primary property tax is still about forty-seven percent. Intergovernmental, which is, again, our state shared and our V L T excise tax, still at thirty percent. County sales tax, eleven percent of our total. Charges for service, five percent. License and permits, two. Transfers, two percent. Miscellaneous, three percent, and very small, less than one percent for fines and forfeits. So, this is a slightly different take on the distribution of our general fund. I had some comments and suggestions on how to better represent the way we are spending our money. So, this breaks up our criminal justice and our law enforcement into three different areas. We've broken it up with the sheriff, which is thirty-three percent, our courts, which is sixteen percent, and legal, which is thirteen percent. So, the sheriff's office piece is really everything related to the sheriff's office, and also the adult detention and the correctional health services that go into that piece of how we spend money there. The courts, under that is our superior court, our juvenile court services, our adult probation, conciliation court, all of our J P courts, and our constables, so sixteen percent of that. And then, that legal piece that is typically part of our criminal justice and law enforcement, that thirteen percent is our county attorney's office and our public defense services office. So.
Angie, does that include the civil attorneys? I mean, the entire?
The entire legal.
Okay.
Yes. Any questions with the way I've broken that pie, that criminal justice and law enforcement piece of that pie up?
No, I like it. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And then, health there is the same thing as what it's always been. That's mainly our contribution to access, and there again, I have listed there about seventeen million, and we know that that's going to probably decrease due to the state budget. And so, like I said, I will continue to watch that piece. Our general government, again, is just, you know, those board offices, our facilities, our utilities, any of those appointed departments. Any other questions there? I did want to give you another look at our forecast, and I really only updated two lines on here, and I have them highlighted, and I just wanted to show you the, the change in the revenue for our property taxes due to the direction given to have our tax rate at three dollars and sixty-nine cents. So, that number, in comparison to what if we would have had a tax rate at three dollars and seventy-five cents, that is about one point seven million dollars less. So, we're putting that back, giving that back to our taxpayers. The other change here is in that non-personnel line. I had, in between our last meeting and today, I had a couple of more, a couple of requests come in from our departments. I've shared the detail with you there. Those, it was about a hundred thousand dollars difference there. I do expect with discussions with Mary Ellen and H R about compensation, we may need to change that personnel number slightly due to critical compensation needs. So, that may change when we come to, back to adopt the final budget. So, here's my last slide. Seven hundred and thirty-four million, five hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars. That is the ceiling for which I'm asking adoption of our tentative budget for this year. Once our tentative budget is adopted, there again, it's our ceiling. We won't be able to increase that number. We've included all of our projected sources, how we're going to use those, including fund balance, and we include those even if we're not going to be spending it. So, I did want to point out that our overall budget increased by about a hundred and sixty-four million dollars, primarily due to grant-funded activities for the American Rescue Plan Act and then other COVID-19 pandemic grant funds that we'll be receiving in this year. So, I also could, should mention. I also should mention that we will be noticing the public for a truth and taxation hearing notice because the tax rate that is included in this budget is above the truth and taxation rate, which is $3.6755. And the rate that you've chosen is 3.69. We will, we will have to notice the public that for a hearing and that hearing will be held on the same day of our adopted budget. Any questions?
Just, Angie, just clarification, I always like to point this out. We, we have to list everything that we might spend, even though we may not spend it or, but if we think we might, we have to list it in here. So the projection is a lot higher than the actuals at the end of the year.
That's correct. And like I said, it's, it doesn't only include the money that we might, it includes everything that we might receive and everything that we might spend, even if it's our financial stability reserve or planned dollars for projects that go into future fiscal years, we have to include that today.
Any questions? Just Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Woods, for clarification, we're reducing the tax rate, but if someone's house value goes up from, say, 150 to 175, their tax bill isn't going to go down because of our rate. Would you agree?
I would agree with you.
So it's important that the public know that even though we're reducing the rate, values of homes are going up. And so unfortunately, the homeowners are not likely going to see a reduction.
Well, and that is particularly the reason why we have to have a truth and taxation notice and a hearing at the time we adopt our final budget.
Thank you.
Angie, but according to legislation, on existing homes cannot increase by more than 5%. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So the max anybody could see on an existing home is, is a 5% increase.
Okay.
New houses are all set at current values.
Yeah, and earlier in the presentation, that's that new construction.
Yeah, that was the difference.
So I'll get you the breakdown of, of the new construction valuation and the existing valuation and what that means to our levy. Okay?
Okay. Any other questions, comments? This is a, I believe this is a board action, right? We have to set a tentative budget?
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
After all that.
And after this, we cannot go up. We can only go down from this number that she presented. So if there's no other questions or comments, do I have a motion by the board?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Pinal County tentative budget for fiscal year 2021 through 2022 that will begin July 1st, 2021, ending June 30th, 2022 in the amount of $734,501,764 in accordance with A R S 42-17103. Approval of this budget also approves primary property tax rate from 3.75 to 3.69. Approval of this budget also approves the creation of any newly requested positions which have and are consistent with existing job classifications that were included in the budget development process. The public hearing and final budget adoption are scheduled for July 7th, 2021.
Very good. Supervisor Goodman, well done. Do I have a second to that motion?
I would echo Supervisor Goodman's motion with a second.
Very good. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you very much. Thank you, Angie. Well done.
Thank you.
And I believe we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.